Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:32, and I will call this regular city council work session to order. Our city, our work sessions are very informal, and we go directly to the agenda. The clerk would note that all council members are present, and this particular meeting is both in person and online. All of our staff members are around the table. And for those who are viewing us, you can view us on Burnsville MN.gov/meetings, or on Comcast Channel 16, or 859. You can also join us on Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. All information is available in our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. So the first item on our agenda this evening is the pedestrian safety ordinance presentation, and Chief Schwartz is going to introduce it, and then introduce Captain Stinger. Chief Schwartz.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us here this evening. We've come before you on a couple of occasions prior to tonight to talk about some increased complaints that we had received probably over the past year that you, as council, and our police officers have received related to people standing on medians, and then questions about what we're doing to address social services concerns, public safety concerns, that sort of thing. So, as you know, we're collaborative. We really work to educate and offer services to people in need, which is evident with our behavioral health unit, which you're all aware of. And so, we also seek to share information with our residents. We want to educate and then enforce behavior that balances and protects everyone's constitutional rights. And so, a couple of things. In October, we came before you. Amber Hansen with Ally Services came. She presented some findings about her outreach efforts in Burnsville, of course, in collaboration with our behavioral health unit and Dakota County Social Services. And then, most recently, we came before you in December of 2022. And we came back to you as some council members had expressed some interest in implementing a potential ordinance to address the public safety concerns that have been coming up with pedestrians and people standing on medians. And so, we, at that point, asked council to give us some direction to, you know, could we spend some time on this, because we knew it was gonna potentially have a lot of staff time into it, which it has. And so, we appreciate the patience that you've given us. But you did give us direction at that time to go ahead and do some research with our city attorney, Mr. Shepherd, and look at ordinances in our neighboring communities, look at ordinances in different states, and then discuss constitutional issues, pros and cons, things like that, as we navigate those constitutional issues. So, Captain Stinger and our city attorney have done extensive work on this. They've spent a significant amount of time researching and doing just what you have directed us to do. So, this evening, we're gonna share some high-level findings from that. We want to be brief. We want to be focused. We want to present the highlights, because we know you will have questions, and we want to be able to address the questions and comments that you have. And then, we will have two paths, or potential options that we'll present to council, so we'll be asking you to provide us a little bit more direction here as we move forward. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Captain Don Stanger, who has been leading this project from the beginning. So, Captain Stanger.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, thank you for your time tonight. I will try to keep it as brief as I can. We're here to talk about pedestrians' safety, and specifically pedestrians on medians. As you know, the city's experienced an increased number of pedestrians remaining on medians at high-volume intersections for extended periods. It's not safe for pedestrians to remain on these medians. Pedestrians are at risk of being struck by large volume of traffic traveling through the intersections at high rates of speeds. We're talking about arterial roadways like County Road 42 and Highway 13 that literally see tens of thousands of vehicles every day traveling on them. Additionally, the speeds in those roads are anywhere, the limits are from 40 to 55 miles an hour, but it's not unusual to have vehicles traveling between 50 and 70 miles an hour on those roadways. Pedestrian presence on the medians distracts drivers, which can also cause accidents. So, the legal landscape, as you know, charitable solicitation of funds is protected under the First Amendment. Municipalities have stopped enforcing aggressive panhandling ordinances. Many of them enacted them over the years, and based on the court cases, they have, for the most part, stopped enforcing any aggressive panhandling ordinances. And through those court determinations, they found restrictions should be content-neutral, address no more speech than necessary, and serve a significant government interest. So, our possible paths here in Burnsville are alternatives. Enforce existing laws without passing a new ordinance. We already can criminalize certain activities with extreme negative effects, such as actually standing in the roadway itself, the traveled roadway, threats, or harassment. We have statutes on board that we can deal with that, but that does nothing to protect pedestrians standing on the roadways or on the medians of those roadways. Or we could consider a content-neutral ordinance that is narrowly tailored to protect public safety for pedestrians and drivers, and does not restrict more speech than necessary. A sample ordinance would possibly identify high-volume intersections, prohibit being on a median of a high-volume intersection unless the person is in the process of legally crossing the roadway, prohibit being on any median after sunset unless legally crossing the roadway. And of course, that addresses the reduced visibilities that you have at the nighttime, different sightlines. It's obviously even more dangerous if you're out there during dark hours. And allow officers to order violators to disperse. Again, this is, we don't typically go out and write tickets. As the chief had said, we go out and we give warnings. Our behavioral health unit has been sent out, and we would continue to do that to address these folks. We work very closely with Ally Social Services to get the resources they need. And again, we would continue to give warnings, but at some point, there might be a need to address it with citations. And this would be another tool in the tool belt to create a safer Burnsville for both pedestrians and drivers. And with that, moving to questions and direction.
Questions for staff? Kara?
So, when we were, when this was presented in one-on-one, one of my questions was, without the ordinance, what are you presently doing? And how is that going?
So, we do have some state statutes that are there. They're not necessarily specific to the medians, but again, with the aggressive panhandling or disorderly conduct, some of those, and we've got some other options. And maybe Jared can speak a little bit to that about what we've got out there. But again, we don't have something necessarily that's working great for just being on the median where the high-volume intersections are.
Okay. Then, that is not what I was told in the one-on-one. So, now I'm confused on that. And previous updates. Previous updates were, perhaps Chief?
I would just say, I would just add, what we're, what we have been doing is, we've done some education. So, what we'll do is, our sergeants right now will go out, and if we get a complaint, or they see someone standing on the medians for whatever reason, they can bring an educational piece of information to them, present it to them, explain to them. First, do you need services? You know, have we had contact? You know, what services do you need? Make those connections, right services, right times, so that we can try to get to the root of what we're doing. Our behavioral health unit has helped with that quite a bit. And then, provide them that information that shows them, here is where you can stand legally if you want to be soliciting for funds, right? That's someplace else, offside the median, on sidewalks. And just kind of that education of where you can be, where you can't be, where it's safe to be, where it isn't safe to be. And then, we will do that three times, right? So, we'll have a contact with someone up to three times, and then we can look at, okay, do we need to enforce this? And say, okay, this person is just disregarding services. This person is just disregarding the orders that we're trying to keep the public and, not only them, but drivers, safe on the road. So, that's kind of the process that we've been doing right now. And then, when we have had people, you know, that we have to have re-contact with, we have issued a citation for that. And so, then that will work its way through the court system for being in the roadway.
And I appreciate that. So, that's what I was looking for. One thing I want residents to know, number one, that our, for people who are truly in need, our law enforcement officers are trying to assist them. Like, that's the first goal, is to assess if the person is in need and try to get them to those services. Also, looking out for public safety and being very cognizant of that, both for the person panhandling, also for the drivers as well, looking at that through safety. I really like the education piece of saying, we're not saying you can't do this. This is a better place for you to be, which is safer for everyone. This one just is not. And then, hearing that there is a process that you've come to on escalation, where if we have a repeat issue, where now it is just a reoccurring safety issue, that you're able to address that and issue a citation. So, I don't want people to think that nothing is happening, that we are ignoring people in need, and we are ignoring public safety, because that's definitely not anything that's been happening.
The other piece that came up also that our residents were very frustrated about, and I think we had a conversation about this, is that the people who are panhandling leave a lot of trash on the medians. And I think part of that education piece was to tell them that they had to take their trash with them. And that's some of the things that you're doing now. And I received one email thanking us for the medians not filled with trash. So, thank you for that. That's all part of that education piece. And so, I like what you all are doing now. To members of the council, what are your thoughts about, you had a, Captain Stinger, you had a narrow version of an ordinance, if we wanted to dive a little deeper into it, that you put out?
Can you just go back to the?
Yeah.
Go back to the?
The sample ordinance, right there. What are your thoughts about that, what we're doing now? And this is something that then addresses it a little tighter.
Right. And I think we'll probably ask the attorney to talk a little bit more about that. I think the one thing that I'll say is, we want, we want any ordinance to be specific. We want it to address the public safety concerns that we have. So, to your point of when there's trash being left out in the medians, that can be a distraction for drivers too. But then, we have people that want to pick up the trash unrelated to it that then are going out and picking up trash. So, what we're trying to look at is how specific, you know, having an ordinance that is specific to the public safety needs, so that we're addressing it for pedestrians who are trying to cross, or who are remaining on medians, and then drivers who are also navigating those areas with the amount of traffic and volume, and things like that, in certain areas of the city. So, we're trying to look at, do we continue to do things how we are? Or do we look at an ordinance that will help us, you know, narrowly focus to, again, what are we trying to address? Not a blanket, just everywhere in the city. How do we look at what are the public safety needs? So, that's, you know, what we're looking for some direction on.
Jared?
Mayor and council, that's correct. The bullet points up there are to kind of highlight some of the things we might look at. As you know, there is sort of a constitutional component to this, a concern. We want to make sure that we craft an ordinance. If we do so, craft an ordinance that is supportable and would, you know, hopefully be not susceptible to a legal challenge. So, what we're gonna be looking at is, is those high-volume intersections, having facts in the record to support the specific, the narrow, the targeted, the targeted choices that we're gonna make. So, it's not gonna cover, you know, every intersection. But it, those high-volume ones that Captain Stanger talked about, you know, 13, those kind of things, those are ones that we would look at when we're determining what the final, the final proposal would be.
And when I look at the four bullet points, they all address public safety, not only of the person standing in the median, but also for drivers, especially when, after sunset. And, yeah, that can be very scary. I know that. Yeah. Kara?
How will people know if they're on one of those intersections?
Mayor and council, we would, once we do the research and get the data to support the choices that we make, those would be in the ordinance, of course. Then, we can do some communication likely to make sure people are aware of that. And then, as Captain Stinger talked about, you know, the first contact is just to talk to pedestrians that are on the median and get them, acknowledge what the ordinance is, and ask them to disperse.
I would also suggest when we?
Believe that this information would be available, that residents and visitors would know?
Well, that was my, one of the things is that this education piece, work with Metro Transit, and it goes on the orange line, because most of the visitors that we have who are panhandling in the city come off the orange line. And how do we know that? Because we see the transitions that take, that take part in that. So, that's one of the areas that you can put educational information. Captain Stinger?
Councilmember Schultz, that's a good question. We do have printed materials now that our officers go out with that talks about panhandling and provides those resources that Ally has. My speculation is, if this ordinance were to pass, we would have the similar printed material saying, these are the locations you can't be based on the ordinance, and here's the resources, and that, that would be my understanding.
Okay. But that, see, this is the challenge. Now, you're, if we had an ordinance that said you cannot wear purple on Tuesday, and then, if we happen to see a person wearing purple on Tuesday, we might give them a leaflet, but they have already broken the ordinance and didn't know about it. Now, most ordinances people would know about, because it's pretty uniform throughout. You don't jaywalk, right? Doesn't matter what intersection. You can't jaywalk. So, I, I'm trying to figure out how people would know before they would break an ordinance, that they would break an ordinance. Because this would be unusual, not just in our city, but surrounding cities. It's not, it's not like a usual thing, that other cities have select intersections that you may or may not be able to stand on that, on that strip. So, that, like, from an implementation of policy, that, that gets tricky. Because I don't, I don't think a person would normally assume that some intersections would be okay and some wouldn't, right? The other thing is, could we perhaps come up with something different about after sunset?
So?
Just because that gets into sunset.
Right.
We got, we got, there's a history of that that I don't want to?
These were sort of like, this doesn't have to mean that any of this was gonna be in the ordinance. We were just trying to sort of give everyone, here's some ideas of things, what, from the research that we looked at from other cities. Some, there is another city that does do some specific intersections. And so, to really look at, you know, again, the targeted, you know, to areas where we know there's a lot of people, a lot of vehicles, and that sort of thing. So, I think what we're really looking for is, that, do you want us to continue to
Yeah.
develop an ordinance, or do you want us to continue to do things as we have? And then, these were just ideas as to, here's some things we've saw, this, we want to be narrowly focused. We want to be neutral. So, that's where some of this comes in. But none of these things necessarily have to be in an ordinance. It's good to know, like, what the thoughts are here. And I think that would develop as we, if you decide, yes, we want you to go ahead and, you know, develop an ordinance, then we could kind of mesh through some of those things as we go along. But, yeah, we wouldn't have to necessarily have.
Yeah. Because you're doing a good job right now, and somehow, things are, seems to be working okay?
Well, I'll say that we had, initially, when we had some discussions with folks, right away, we saw a little bit of, okay, maybe people aren't out. Now, we're seeing some more nice weather. We're seeing an increase of people, more, again.
It's escalating, yeah.
So, as this will kind of come and go.
Yeah. And I've seen that traffic in the heart of the city on Nicollet and 13.
Our complaints have increased. Our police officers are seeing more people out.
Yeah. Councilmember Dan Gustafson?
Chief Captain, as I'm listening to this, is, would there be an issue if we did something that really just encompassed the city, except for maintenance, illegal crossings? You just don't hang out in any medians in Burnsville. So, we're not picking certain intersections and that. It's just like our ordinance is here. It's kind of like our parking ordinance. You know, 2:00 to 6:00 a.m., you don't park in Burnsville on the streets. That's just the way it is.
Councilmember Gustafson, I would actually turn to the city attorney to answer that question.
Okay.
Mayor and council, that would not be the approach I would recommend.
Okay.
Ordinances that are, have been that broad have been routinely struck down. Because even though we're, we're not talking about an ordinance that particularly talks about a specific First Amendment activity, it touches on First Amendment-protected activity. And therefore, it's gonna be looked at with intermediate scrutiny by a court. And so, it's gonna have to be narrowly tailored to a significant governmental interest, and not have more speech than necessary. So, if you curtail all the medians, all the places where people could stand, then a court's likely gonna strike that tone.
I'm just trying to address what Kara was talking about, is how, if I come in from Brooklyn Center, how do I know this is an intersection I can't be in?
Most likely, people wouldn't know that until they have a contact with us. I mean, realistically, I would just throw that out there.
Mayor and council, I would add, certainly, the city will always follow what is statutorily required in terms of, our ordinances follow a process that you approve and ultimately publish them, and all of that is part of the public record and how the city communicates on those issues. Certainly, all of our ordinances are available online, not only as required, but we also try to make sure that that's as user-friendly and accessible as possible. Michelle and her team are actually, through the Code Review Task Force process, working on how to make that system more user-friendly, so it's easier for people to find those local nuances that every city has, certainly, to Councilmember Schultz's point, Councilmember Gustafson's point. Every city, there is, there certainly are standard ordinances that one might expect. But then, there also is local nuance, right? That's just kind of the way of the world that we live in. When we do have new ordinances or regulations that we might put in place, obviously, the first step we're going to take is to engage and communicate and make contact with folks, whether that's in public safety, police, in this example, or across the organization, business licensing, something about your home's maintenance. Our approach is always going to be to make sure that we're trying to communicate those things to the right audiences at the right time, but then, take a very educational approach as we interact with folks. I think, Councilmember Schultz, you make a good point about wearing purple on Tuesday. That presents some operational challenges for us. It absolutely does. And certainly, there's the potential of conflict when, when those types of things arise. So, we're cognizant of that, and we would be very intentional about how we would not only craft this for your review, for public comment through the process, but then, but then also, if an ordinance were to be adopted by the council, then we would be very mindful of how we plan our communication, our engagement efforts, how those contacts, how that communication is happening, knowing that this is a bit of a, of a different regulation than maybe some others around us might have.
So, there are two paths before us. One is doing this, or continue to do what you're doing right now. So, I think unless the council wants to continue talking about the possibility of a sample ordinance, or would you like to just make a choice on the path that police needs to take, to continue with what we're doing, and if they continue to be successful, and if there are any other issues, that we can talk about it? Or do you want them to pursue a sample ordinance that's narrowly focused? Yes. Vince?
My preference would be to pursue a sample ordinance. I think it adds a little bit more definition and some teeth into what we're trying to accomplish right now. You know, I don't expect anybody that's panhandling in Burnsville to walk in and know that such an ordinance exists. But if our process is to, you know, make three interactions before we go to enforcement, obviously, that first interaction is gonna be an educational one, where we're going to make it clear that this is what our standards are. And I would say overwhelmingly, most people that are panhandling, as we heard from our one presentation, are pretty good at it, and probably are familiarizing themselves with what every city they go to, how they handle it, and kind of what their parameters are. So, I think this would just be another, you know, checklist for these people to follow. You know, when I met with Captain Stinger, my only real concerns, which, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're not putting our officers in a situation, you know, which escalates, and suddenly, we've got, you know, physical altercations happening with somebody for panhandling. And that's not doubting our officers, it's doubting the individuals, if there's maybe a severe mental health situation. I would, I would just hate to see our officers, you know, on YouTube or something because of a panhandler. And then, my other concern was, how are judges going to be, or are they currently reacting to these citations? Obviously, judges are putting more of an emphasis on serious crimes. And so, if we're issuing citations, is this gonna become more of a nuisance in the courts than anything? But circling back to what I started with, having more definition to what we're trying to achieve, I think, is the ideal situation here, above leaving it as is, which I think is just inherently broad.
So, you're okay with what police is offering up?
As long as PD is comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts? Okay, I'll go to Dan Kay, and then back to Kara.
Well, I don't want to repeat what Vince said. He took the words out of my mouth. I would like to see it pursued, as the person who brought this
A sample ordinance?
idea forward. I think we're on the right track, and we need to refine it and pursue an ordinance, because I think it does clarify a lot of things. And this has been tried, as the city attorney pointed out, in other cities, and it's gotten shot down a lot, because I think they were going about it maybe in a different way. But I think we're on the right track of doing it the right way. And I agree that it is an enforcement challenge for, for communication, because to Councilmember Schultz's point, unless we're gonna post a sign on those intersections, which could come to that, but it's gonna be an education thing. It's gonna be a flat-out learning curve for people who are standing in those medians.
Okay. Kara?
I think we're going to come to challenges with this, that it's not, it's not going to be workable. Or if we do implement it, it's, it's going to be headaches either now or in the future. Reason being?
It's gonna be like parking.
While it can be a policy that we have three contacts before we issue a citation, that's a policy. That's not the ordinance. And if you're gonna have a policy that you would have three contacts before issuing a citation, why would that not be the ordinance? Like, then you're getting into really subjective enforcement, and that opens us up to possible legal issues that are simply not good, especially on discrimination. There's a reason these are being shot down, and I get that we can go very, very narrow, and I get that we can try another area, but there are multiple reasons why these are being shot down everywhere. So, I mean, my preference would be that we, we wait and see if continuing to do what we're presently doing has a longer-lasting effect and starts to change behavior, right? It's kind of like that, you know, a rock tumbler polishing a rock, gentle contacts, polish the rock, rather than trying to chip away at it. And this is trying to chip away at it. So, I, I don't see how one could be crafted that is not going to, as Vince said, get our officers on YouTube, because that officers on YouTube because that would be pleasant for everyone, be thrown out in court, and be an absolute headache, especially when we're already saying, well, yeah, we'll have this ordinance, but not really going to enforce it. Then don't have it. Then don't have it. This is just a hard area. This is just one of those super-hard areas. And I, you know, I don't know that there is a good solution. There aren't always good solutions.
Dan G.
Well, as I'm looking at this, I like what we're doing now with the education. I like that our behavioral health units are getting involved with all of that. And I think we should continue to do that. But I also know that at some point, if that doesn't work, we have to have something to come back with and not have to create an ordinance later on because it's just not working for us. I don't look at putting this in place so we can just go pound on people, but it's just one of those things that should we have to use it, we should have it in our tool chest in case we get into a situation where we have to do something. Because if we don't have anything, we're kind of stuck out there with all this. And I'd say we've gotten enough complaints from our citizens in town that they would like us to see something about just people being in our medians all over the place. So, I think we can find a balance somewhere in there where education first, enforcement second kind of thing, you know? And then that could be a good policy for us to look at, but we should have an ordinance in place so that we can enforce should the time come to do that, just kind of like our building codes and that. I mean, we spend a great deal of time with our building owners going through everything.
So, what are you saying? Do the sample ordinance?
Yeah. Can I finish my sentence?
Oh, well, I'm just because I thought you were done and I'm trying to understand.
No, I'm just giving the example that we have ordinance in place that if we have to enforce, we can enforce, but we seem to always go through education first in this city. And I like the fact that that's what we do. So, yes, I would say let's look at a sample ordinance.
So, where I stand with this is that I agree with Councilmember Schultz. What we're doing is working, appears to be working, but then we got into the winter and so we didn't have a lot. So, now we're coming into summertime again and we don't know what that's going to look like. And I believe that our officers have done a great job of educating people along with all of the partners that we have in place right now. And I'd like to see another season go with what we're doing because what will happen is that we'll be pausing and doing a lot. I know you'll be doing the work that you need to do to keep people safe. And it's no different than parking overnight and what a headache that is, to your point. How you enforce all of that throughout the community. But I would like to see another season with what you're doing now without getting into an ordinance. So, it's a 3-2, and it appears to me that we're going to go with a sample ordinance. But you needed to hear from my point of view as well. But there's a majority of the council who would like to see a sample ordinance. And then to Chief Schwartz and City Manager, you're going to put together a sample ordinance, addressing those four points.
I'd just like to say that whatever this is, my primary concern is that our officers are comfortable with it and that we're not putting anybody with a badge in a situation that compromises them or their duties. So, above everything else, I don't want any, I don't remember what word I'm trying to find, but if there's a problem with our officers actually executing on this, then I would be willing to pull the plug on it immediately because at the end of the day, those are the people that would have to go and do this and are already doing it. And if there's a potential for any, you know, negative outcome like I talked about earlier, then I don't want to put anybody in that position.
Well, I can tell you with the things that we've been doing, you will always have one outlier who took us to court, who threatened me. So, I had to set all of that to police. Thank you, Captain Stinger, for all of the work you did with all of that. And also to our prosecutors because all of his suits, how many items were they? They were all shot down by the judge. We won all.
Yeah, I think he's got.
How many?
He's got two with us and two in Apple Valley.
Yeah. And with us, they were both shot down by the judge. So, I thought the way our officers handled a lot of that, and I think Public Works, you were involved in cleaning up the medians.
We were.
Yeah. So, you can see what our staff has been doing. And so, I commend our staff. Greg, Chief, and Director Ryan, through this last year, addressed the citizens' concerns. One of them took us to court. One of them sort of stalked me. Thank you to staff for making sure that all of that was okay and Chief for all of the help that police gave. But I'd like to see what another season with what you're doing happens because what happened there is that I was pleased that our officers weren't in an altercation. And it was handled in such a way that that individual, even though he was belligerent, yelling and screaming at you, "I'm in the back." So, but thank you. You know, if there was a YouTube, they would have seen that you guys handled that. Excellent. Yeah.
I just would want to say, just, you know, hearing a few comments here, I just, you know, our officers make sound decisions and we trust them to do the work that they need to do. We know that they can execute what we need them to execute. They have the tools and the training to be able to do these things. We aren't, you know, they're not going to shy away from doing hard work, I mean, in anything, right? In police work, could end up on YouTube for anything. And I trust that, you know, and they can be doing the right things and are doing the right thing. So, regardless, we can still end up on YouTube for any of those things. And if we never did anything because we thought a judge was going to throw it out or a prosecutor wasn't, wouldn't charge it, we wouldn't really be doing much some days.
Yeah, doing your job.
So, we will, again, in the way that we do it in Burnsville, do it right and educate and, you know, listen to council and, you know, come back with something that we can talk about and go from there. So, but we will, of course, keep an eye on how things are going over this next.
And, you know, with all of the residents who have complained and sent all of those letters and emails, you know, I have connected with them, almost everyone, and then you all have connected. And when you sit down and talk with them, you know, they're concerned about public safety. They're concerned about the trash. And so, thank you to Ryan and his crew for cleaning up the medians that people were complaining about. And, but I'd like to see another season, but the majority of the council would like a sample ordinance. So, that's where we're at. Okay?
Mayor and council, we have our direction. Certainly, it is going to take some time to develop a draft ordinance language, so kind of to the season point that you've made, Mayor.
You might get through a season.
We probably will get through a season, frankly. So, just to level set expectations. We'll continue working on it. This will be something, obviously, that will come back to you to talk about in draft form, to get your more specific direction. Appreciate the clarity from tonight. Staff will continue to work together alongside the city attorney to draft something, bring it back for further discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Williams Drive. And Ryan, Director of Public Works, do you want to tee it up before Jen does it or is Jen going to move directly into it?
I can tee it off.
You want to tee it up?
You bet.
Okay.
So, each year, we drive around and are making sure that the roads that we're going to improve coming up are the correct roads, the ones that need it the most, and they're done in the most strategic manner possible. This past year, our street department and engineering folks were reviewing Williams Drive, which was scheduled for 2025, and noted that it is deteriorating quicker than we anticipated and would hope it would. And Engineering Department noted mainly the characteristics associated with Williams Drive and has a recommendation for potential, taking a closer look at it. With that, I turn it over to City Engineer Ezra.
Yeah, welcome.
I think you just did the whole presentation.
Oh, no.
I am wearing purple on Tuesday, so I was a little worried. The only one here.
Send somebody to get you.
So, you get three conversations. I was trying to remember for next.
That was the education piece.
Okay. So, now do we all know that Tuesday is Purple Day? Okay. Floor is yours, City Engineer.
It's not. It looks like it's working. Oh, wait, there we go. Okay. All right. So, as Ryan had noted, we had done our drive-around and it's part of our two-year process for evaluating projects for next year. So, this is a slide that you had seen before. We're in the defining the scope of our 2024 projects right now. And so, at the drive-around, Williams Drive came to the top as being one that was in need. And then just for context, this is the Williams Drive area. The project would be from Morgan to Savage border. And there are a number of single-family homes with direct access. So, about 30 driveways access directly onto Williams Drive. And then we have some multifamily on the east side, some townhomes and an apartment. There's a church on the west side. And then recreational amenities to the north. We have our Rose Bluff Trail Crossing at Judicial, and that winds up to those amenities to the north. And then on the east side, there's an existing trail on County Road 5 that brings people up to the MRQ area. We just did a trail project there last year, brings people eventually to the river. So, that's sort of the context. Over in Savage, there are virtually no single-family driveways. So, it's very different once you cross over our border. And here is just a look at the street view from Google. So, it's a wide road. It measures 55 feet from curb to curb. And there's two through lanes and a continuous center turn lane. The continuous center turn lane is really wide in itself. It's about 15 feet wide and the lanes are normal, but then we have these wide shoulders. And that's because this had already been on a road die at once. So, in Savage, it's two lanes in each direction. And here, we have the three-lane section, but at the time, not moving curbs, it's still really wide. And so, and there's also a narrow sidewalk on the south side, a retaining wall on the north side in some places. We have a speed limit of 40 miles per hour, and Savage, it increases to 45. And then, I think I already talked about, yeah, the divided, undivided roadway. So, our police department has indicated that they've found people going up to 65 miles an hour through here. It's just wide open and the feeling is that you can go fast. They've also noted that that center turn lane has been used as a passing lane, not as a turn lane, in many, many instances where you're just, you know, you're going maybe the speed limit of 40. It's just not fast enough for some, so they just get around it. So, that's an unsafe situation.
At least they were doing it on the left or on the right.
Right, right. That'd be pretty narrow, but turn, or passing. So, what we're proposing is to do a little bit of a deeper dive, to look at this corridor to see if there is any improvements that we can make since we're going to be doing a street improvement anyway. Now is the time before we just put back exactly what was there. So, the corridor study will include a traffic analysis, speed study, crash history, and then a couple of alternatives for what could be with moving curbs, not moving curbs, having trails. There's a bunch of opportunities. So, that would be the study would include all of these things. We have a kickoff already scheduled on May 19th with the consultants and the staff team so that we can get started on a very fast-paced corridor study through the summer. So, we want to study it so that we can be on track for making a recommendation in the normal timeframe we would for 2024 project. Back to you, towards the end of the summer, early fall, with a recommendation for what this corridor could look like. So, just wanted to open up if there's any considerations we should have during the study. Public engagement is a priority, and so we'll be having multiple touchpoints with residents out there, business owners. I don't think there's that many business owners, but the church, Savage, Scott County. It's a route that many people use kind of driving through, so citywide engagement that will be happening in June and July.
Thank you. So, this is a report. No action is required. This is the work that you're going to be doing. And the thing is, it was good to hear from the residents in that area about this particular road because where was it on your pavement management plan? Was it?
2025.
25. You just moved it up a year then.
Yeah, yeah.
You just moved it up a year.
Yeah.
Okay. How about all of the infrastructure underneath?
So, there is potential for some water main replacement. If we did anything, there is, you know, we'd look at all of that infrastructure.
So, you'll do all of that at this time?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you very much and with all of the work that you're doing because I remember when we took that from four lanes and then only to three, one going east and one going west and then the turn lanes. And so, you're going to do something where you'll have some bike pass?
Potentially. So, the outcome of this.
Because you'll do a review like you always do in terms of complete street analysis.
Right. So, the outcome of this could be a narrower road, it could be the same footprint. We just need to look at the alternatives in a little bit closer manner.
Well, I trust all of the work that you do with all of the residents along that area. You all come out with a great plan like you did last time. I mean, that's your work. Good. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the compensation plan market analysis. City Manager Lindberg, you want to start us off with this one, please?
Certainly. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as we continue with this year's budget process, one of the things that we had committed to through last year's organizational analysis and our early budget conversations this year was to make sure that we're leaving no stone unturned in terms of the needs and the potential budget impacts. As you all are well aware, nearly 75% of our operating budget goes directly to the total rewards of our staff. I think you're all also aware, not only from a city operations, a city service perspective, but just out in the world right now, there are some interesting labor market dynamics going on. So, what we wanted to do, starting last year, was to assess our current compensation plan to make sure that that 2018 plan was still working and look to the future to determine what, if anything, we might need to do as we think about our, how we strategically look at staff compensation across the organization. Obviously, any conversation about staff compensation, excuse me, has an impact on our budgets, and that's why we wanted to get this back to you at this point in time. So, Carissa Bartholomew, our HR Director, and Jenny Rody, our CFO, have been working diligently together alongside the team to not only understand how our plan is currently working, but also look to the future in terms of the investment that we make in our people. I would say that just by our experience over the course of the past year, an interesting dynamic, we've had five labor agreements open. So, all of our organized labor groups have had contracts that were open this year. We were successful in settling all of those agreements. All of the agreements required us to enter into MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding, with those labor groups, that we would be doing this work, that we would be looking at compensation in the way that we talked about both through the last budget process and into this one. So, this work also reflects the commitment that we've made to about 60% of our staff to be having this conversation. I would say more broadly than that, the philosophy that we use and the strategic approach that we take to staff compensation is one of the primary components of really how we build and execute, build our organization and execute on our strategic priorities. And to that, one of Um, in, into that, uh, one of our plans in future budget cycles is to expand the organizational analysis to be more than it was just last year, which really was looking at where are we at in terms of staffing complement as an organization to inform your budget conversations. Um, uh, as we've talked about, we're gonna take that organizational analysis and, and not only continue to look at operationally, uh, how are we, how are we using in most efficiently and effectively delivering service through the number of people that we have working for us? But we're gonna add two additional components. This component, uh, so every year we'll parallel the budget process, not only with that evaluation of how we're staffing the operation, but also how we're, how we're compensating them, the, the wages, salaries, and benefits that we're providing uh, in return for the work uh, that our folks do for the community. And we're also going to be uh, integrating the service inventory uh, that we completed for the first time as part of, uh, as part of the budget process last year. So those three components, assessing our staffing, assess, assessing how we address total rewards uh, in comparison with the services that are being delivered and the market conditions that we exist in, and uh, making sure uh, that our first-of-its-kind service inventory across the organization, all of those components are aligned to inform your budget uh, discussions, uh, has been uh, the priority of this evolution uh, and, and will be the result of this year's budget process. So this is one of those three components that we want to talk about this evening, um, get some direction from you, uh, and then we will continue the work of aligning both our assessment of, of the people that we have uh, to deliver service to the community, and ultimately how we provide returns for that work. So with that, I will turn it over to both Carissa and Jenny, um, to talk a little bit about uh, what we know uh, to date and uh, what we need to be talking about into the future.
Okay. Who goes first, Carissa or Jenny?
I'll go first and I'll let Jenny follow it up with the numbers.
Okay. Always comes down to the numbers.
Seems to be a reasonable approach.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so as the councils are aware, um, we engaged a consultant this spring in doing a market assessment to check where we are in terms of our placement against market. Um, and so tonight, we're just gonna be sharing those results, um, talk about some recommendations of, and some considerations for the council to think about um, in terms of our compensation and pay philosophy. So the study results, overall, things are looking okay. Our compensation overall is meeting market, but when I say overall, that doesn't mean everybody. That means a majority of our positions are sitting in line with market, but we do have some positions that are lagging, um, particularly when it comes to public safety. Um, and, and that, coming from the HR perspective, because we've been doing a lot of recruiting lately, um, that's, that's increasingly difficult for myself and the HR team when we're trying to bring additional folks on board and we're just struggling to find them. There is a shrinking labor pool going on. Um, public safety, that's a very niche position, that's specific to government. Um, and so we are seeing some struggles there. So when we, so we, when we look at what we're doing with, with the market, where we're sitting against market, when we start talking about, okay, well, if we want everyone to meet market, so not a majority, but if we want all the positions to meet market, to really go in alignment with our pay philosophy, what does that look like? How do we do that? Um, and, and we have pay equity out there, which I know everyone's aware of here. So we have that pay equity law out there that talks about um, consistent, consistency in our pay philosophy and making sure that when, when we set, set our pay, that there's this trend line, so, so we're fair in terms of position, it's weight and pay, um, to, to create consistency and compliance with pay equity. So when we start to talk about, well, how, how do we, how do we approach this? What, what could we do? What should we do? Um, staff is really recommending looking at trying to move up and lead the market a little bit more, not be at the top of market, but look at leading the market, because where we're sitting right now at meet market isn't always working for us. We're still seeing some recruitment and some retention issues. Um, if, if, if we want to talk about um, you know, our organization and looking at total rewards and enhancements and that total compensation package and total rewards package, we really want to make sure we're looking at compensation as well and setting ourselves up for success. Uh, people are, are our most important assets here with the city. Uh, we, we provide services. And Mayor, I know you'd probably say we provide water too, um, but people are our most app, important assets here. So staff wants to recommend looking at a leading the market approach and paying at the seventy-fifth percentile. And what that really means is on average, not every position, but most positions, this would look like a six to seven percent increase higher than market average with pay. And this places Burnsville uh, on average, again, not with every position, but with a majority, a placement of about third or fourth within the marketplace. So we're towards the top of market, um, making us a little bit more attractive for candidates coming in and for staff staying here at the city of Burnsville. Um, we of course could consider, you know, doing nothing with the market. We were, for the most part, meeting market. Overall, a majority of positions are. Um, so we could technically, in theory, stay with our current position where we're at. Um, but with that, we, we're gonna continue to face challenges with collective bargaining. I know City Manager Lindberg mentioned, we, we struggled with negotiations and we had to create promises and MOUs um, to all of our labor groups indicating that we would commit to looking at market. Um, and we're gonna continue experiencing recruiting challenges, especially within our um, police and fire units. So tho- those are some things to think about when we're talking about stay with where we're at or consider moving to, to a more lead-the-market approach. And I did want to point out, um, just cause I was mentioning, uh, police really struggling with those recruitments. We're third from the bottom now um, in, in public safety when it comes to recruiting, which is, is, is hurting us more. We, in negotiations, we weren't that far down, but as a majority of our other contracts settled, we are coming even further down uh, the market than we thought we were previously. So again, just, just create some difficulties. And I know we have Chief, Chief Jungman and Schwartz here, so I don't know if they want to add to, to some of the experiences that, that we're seeing with recruitment and retention.
Chief Schwartz.
Um, I, I would just say, um, this is very concerning to me, and I would say we are uh, beyond challenging times. I would say we're in a crisis mode when we're talking about law enforcement and recruitment and retention of police officers. It takes a long time to onboard our people. It takes six to nine months. So again, really concerning to me when I see that we're lagging in the market. And uh, because as I've been before, the council before, the calls are increasingly more dangerous. There's more weapons out there. You turn on the news and police officers are being killed in line of duty for day-to-day work they do. So um, there's a lot of other, a lot of other factors uh, on my mind right now, but I, I just want to put out there that it's really concerning to me. I want our officers to um, be compensated for the work that they do, because we have a recruitment crisis. What we don't need is retention crisis. What we don't need is our officers uh, leaving and going someplace else where they're gonna be more readily compensated. So um, we do a great job with the total rewards package and I appreciate that. I know they do too as well, but uh, we really have to get them, you know, and our staff uh, to this, um, we have to get out of mid-market. We're asking them to do a lot. We've always asked them to do a lot. And so um, and with all the, the challenges of law enforcement, new mandates, licensing mandates, new policies, all of these things, um, more mental health calls for service, all of these things that require more time for police officers, this all just connects to stress, burnout, heavy workloads, and um, we have to, we have to compensate for that, or we're gonna lose people, and that's what I don't want to see happen, so.
Chief? I, I have asked you because I've noticed that there are some officers that I know who were part of our, our PD. I know we've lost quite a bit to mental health also, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And we can't fill quickly.
Right.
And it's quite a few because I said, what happened to this person? What happened to this person? What happened to this person? And because of medical PTSD and all of that. It's a difficult, difficult job when each day you're reliving all of these incidents over and over again.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, I'd just add that even in the fire world, the market is changing so quickly. Um, we used to be one of six all-career departments in the state, and that's no longer the case. There, there are definitely many more now, um, particularly our neighboring agencies. I will tell you that compensation and workload are important factors. Last year, our workload went up fourteen percent alone, and we're on track for another twelve percent this year. So in a matter of two years, our workload have gone up twenty-five percent. Um, right now, our neighbor Bloomington is transitioning and they're hiring eighteen people a year until they get to sixty firefighters, and they're gonna staff six fire stations. And they're hiring firefighter paramedics that aren't transporting. They go out on an engine and first respond. And so we actually had one of our folks consider going over there, cause for a couple thousand dollars less, they can be one of six engines responding to calls and not have the responsibility of the transport component. Um, Prior Lake is hiring twelve firefighters. Who would've thought? I wouldn't have thought that this quickly, you know, Savage hired a bunch of full-time firefighters. So um, we're really asking a lot out of our folks to do nine thousand calls out of two fire stations and um, we have folks looking at other places. I just got a resignation letter this week that I've got a person transferring to St. Paul, cause he can go and have the ability to, to go work on an engine or a ladder company and not just a medic rig. And um, we have a great culture here and we've got great people, and I want to make sure that we keep doing that. Like, we hire the best of the best and they provide an excellent service to the community, and I don't want us to, to slip from that. Um, similar to Chief Schwartz, from the time I get a resignation, so we haven't filled, we have it filled and they're, they're able to count towards minimums, you're looking at six to nine months, you know? So in that time, that means overtime to backfill. That means field trainers to train the people. Um, you know, the best thing we can do is take money off the table, again, not paying this, the, the leading edge of the market, but high enough that it's, it's not the factor of why they're coming or staying. Um, and then really, we can focus on fulfilling our mission, the technical skills, our organizational culture, and really the wellness of our staff. You know, we have a lot to offer here and people really enjoy the people they work with and the community we work for. And really trying to uh, elevate the, the compensations to, to equate to really the workload that we're asking of them compared to our neighboring agencies, I think is, is really helpful. Um, it's a compelling reason to keep them here, cause as Chief Schwartz said, recruitment's hard enough, we don't want to have a retention challenge. And um, I don't see the call volume going down, I don't see the demands of the service going down, and I, I don't see the complexity going down. So I, I think those are all important factors to, as we move forward, how do we make sure that we keep staff here, both in public safety and across the city? Cause I will tell you, our partners across the city are very important and vital to us providing services. Um, Venables can tell you based on the number of IT tickets we put in daily, right? Like-
Or the amount of times you spend complaining about it.
And the amount of times. You know, the, we're all tied together to some extent, and, and we can't do it if I don't have fleet taking care of the trucks, and I don't have finance paying the bills, and I don't have communications helping me get the message out there, right? All this is tied together um, in providing great service to the community, and, and we've done some great things as we've evolved this organization, and I, I want us to keep doing that. And the only way we're gonna do that is continue to hire and retain the best quality people out there, and I'm proud of the work our folks do and we want to keep doing that. I don't want to be losing these people to other places.
Yeah. And you all do a fine job of hiring the best, training them, but then there's always someone else who is going to give them something else that's better, uh, might not have the best culture, but when they're looking at, but when they're looking at how much money they can get and also less of a stress with the job, and I'm sorry to hear that we're losing another one in St. Paul. And then of course, with everybody else um, needing firefighter paramedics and we have trained them, they're poaching.
There's more jobs than there are people to fill the jobs.
Yeah. Yeah.
So as we think, Mayor and councils, we think about being strategic about our future, uh, first, there's, there's more we need to talk about here, right? Uh, I, there, there's an investment component to this. Obviously, there's a budget impact, um, and, and Jenny will cover that from a, from a finance and budget perspective. Um, I don't, I don't take asks like this lightly. Uh, as the, as your city manager and as the, as the leader of this organization, it's my responsibility, really in my mind, to do two things. To take care of our people, uh, the people delivering service, so, so they ultimately can take care of the community. Uh, my job really isn't more complicated than that, although some days it might, it might feel or appear to be. Uh, it, it really isn't. Um, I, I don't take, uh, I don't take asking you uh, these types of, uh, for this type of direction lightly. Uh, this is an investment. I view this as an investment, not just in the people who serve this community, but it really is an investment in the community. Um, we do think that we have a, a path to, to make this work within the, the five-year uh, plan for levy increases that you already established last year. Uh, Jenny's going to talk about that. Uh, I, I do think it's also important uh, to, to, to underscore kind of what we are asking. At the seventy-fifth percentile, that's, that's fancy HR compensation language to say what is on the slide in front of you and what Carissa has already said, generally between six and seven percent on average, higher at the highest end of our pay scale uh, for a, a typical position. That doesn't mean that everyone gets a six or seven percent raise. That's not what we're asking here. Uh, what we are saying is, in the fourteen communities that we have to keep, that we choose to compare ourselves to and have to under pay equity standards to establish our regression analysis and where the market sits from a compensation perspective uh, under uh, pay equity laws in Minnesota, um, what we're suggesting is that our strategy be that we be about number four on that list. Uh, so I think it's important, just, just for you, also for the community, to suggest, we're not suggesting anyone's at the top of the list. We're not suggesting that we're completely uh, leading edge on this, but we are saying that we believe that it's important for all the factors that frankly, Chief Jungman and Chief Schwartz just addressed better than I ever could. Um, uh, from a, from purely a retraction, uh, retention, motivation perspective, uh, that we make an investment in, in frankly, taking money off the table for us to focus on where we really always have been drawn, which is, which is culture, values-driven work, a, 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 a strong commitment to staff training, uh, and a strong commitment to delivering excellent service to this community. Um, so I, I think just that context is important. Then as we look at, uh, what would this investment require us to do and how might we path it in the current budget situation that we find ourselves in? And Jenny's done some great work with the, the ten-year financial management plan. Uh, she'll share a little bit of that with you, both through your own education as well as the communities here, um, as we, as we talk about uh, how we might make this investment work, should you choose to do so.
So if you're okay, I'm gonna go to Jenny and have her tell us about how this is gonna work, and then come to-
That's fine.
Jenny.
Mayor, council members, I'll talk a little bit about um, what we think the cost of implementing this might be and, and what, what might be the path going forward here in the 2024 budget. Um, the total um, estimated budget impact is about one point one million dollars across all funds um, to implement a leading the market strategy. That's really seven hundred and fifty thousand in wages and about three hundred and fifty thousand in benefit costs. Um, we, we estimate the general fund impact to be about nine hundred and fifty thousand Um, there's two primary implementation paths, really um, use of fund balance or use of levy. Um, staff rec- our staff recommendation really is to, to work this in um, and use fund balance. There is a path to that, and I'll kind of, I'll show you what that does in terms of our fund balance in the ten-year plan um, on the next slides. If we were to implement this um, in one year, the levy impact would be approximately two percent. Um, so just, just to kind of give you a um, kind of a, a feel for the, that dollar amount. We could also look in at a phased approach at implementing this over a two-year period In terms of general fund, fund balance, just to kind of take a look, I've, I programmed in um, what, what it would look like if we implemented this all in 2024. Um, the line just shows the, the fund balance policy. I'm sorry, it's a little small here. Um, trying to get eleven years on that, on that graph. Um, the policy is really the, the white line. The gray is what we projected fund balance um, prior to, to adding um, this layer for the compensation study. And the blue line is what fund balance in the general fund would look like if we were to utilize fund balance in 2024 to implement this um, in one year. Uh, what it does, it does bring fund balance down in 2026 to the forty percent policy level, but you can see going out from there. I know 2027 and 2028 are a little hard to see, they're small- But you can see going out from there. I know twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight are a little hard to see. They're small, but it does, fund balance does steadily increase over twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty-three to come back to come back up. So and and it gives us some time. I mean, this is a, the FMP really is a a planning tool. We do have, there's a lot of change that can happen between now and then, but this just gives us a snapshot and we can see that we're we're headed in the right direction back up with fund balance. So really, as we look at what the options might be in terms of a staff recommendation, the plan works, maintaining fund balance above the forty percent policy level. It really smoothes that necessarily necessary levy increase because there is a levy impact ultimately over the next five years, really maintains that non-binding levy increases from twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven and utilizes the flexibility that we've got built into our current FMP. With that, as you can see, we will have, we are planning to have a smaller fund balance in the general fund. It will impact our capacity to continue to to use fund balance for any other items in the future. But certainly, as we as we go forward, I mean, this is a snapshot in time. What we know today, we're certainly going to be doing more budget, obviously, more budget work and estimation of where we think we'll be at the end of twenty twenty-three. So we'll continue to look at, you know, refine those numbers as we go through the process. So that's that's what I have. I'm I stand for any questions on that and I think what we're looking for tonight is some direction on would we like to invest in that lead-the-market strategy.
So staff's recommendation is to do this and draw down the fund balance, but you're going to continue to work to ensure that our fund balance then stays healthy, as I'm hearing you. But we're drawing it down and then we're going to spread this out.
Jenny, if you could go back to the slide, the short answer, Madam Mayor is council members is yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
You've got the you've got the horizontal line that has a slight upward direction to it. That is your that's your policy, as as Jenny articulated. The the gray bars are essentially the current FMP without programming this one point one million dollar investment in. The the blue bars represent essentially no increase to the property tax levy, no increase to that seven point six-three percent year-over-year levy increase that is is currently our target for this year's budget. And those blue lines then represent, if we were to spend fund balance down on this investment, where our fund balance would be over the coming ten years. I think important to note is in twenty-six and twenty-seven, we're right at that policy line. We maintain policy, but we're down to forty percent. And the plan should work to grow that fund balance, right? To save for a rainy day. Or needs that the city might have to cover its operating expenses is a better way to put that. So we're comfortable from a staff perspective of this recommendation, kind of with the current majority direction of the council, to be, I would say, conservative with our fund balances. It it works. And again, I would underscore, I do believe this is the single most significant investment that that you could possibly make, certainly in this year's budget and into future years' budget. And I think that that is a reasonable I think the use of fund balance is reasonable in making that investment as to not put upward pressure on year-over-year property tax levy increases as a result. So we're trying to balance the the strategic needs of the organization and certainly the policy direction, as we've heard it to date from the council and and ultimately respect the value that our community expects from us.
I think Dan K., you had your hand up.
I did. I I agree with Chief Schwartz. I think we're in a, it's it's become a crisis because we've been dealing with these things for a while. It's not like this just crept up this year. You've done everything you can, both Chief Jungman and Schwartz, to manage and absorb and react to and get your, you know, get your arms around the recruitment challenge. The pandemic dealt a mighty blow in a bad way to a lot of different areas of our economy, businesses, public safety, cities, et cetera. Millions of private businesses went out of business because of the pandemic. So it really spared no one that I know of. And I, you know, the one thing that I've never been willing to compromise on is is the strength of our public safety. And I certainly don't think we should hear, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with this plan because I and I just hope it's enough because I'm skeptical that it's going to be enough, that we may have to do more. But I I wholeheartedly support it. In giving you all the tools that you need for recruitment and retention, I don't believe it's all just money. We need to take this one off the table. But what are the other amenities, benefits, that Burnsville could implement or introduce that can also go to the part of a person's job satisfaction that doesn't revolve around money? You've got to be in the game at a certain level to get money off the table and I think and hopefully this will do it. But that's because of what's going on in the marketplace, all we're going to do is, you know, run a little forward again and everybody else is going to be right there with us. So what will separate us to make us a more appealing and attractive city to work in law enforcement or firefighting and paramedic? Given all these factors, you know, what is it on the job? What is it in this building or in Fire Station One or Two? What else can we do to make a person who's applying go, well, the money might be a little better in Maple Grove, or the job might be similar money for a little less work in Bloomington, but Burnsville offers this, this, and this. That's important to me as a person, to my family, to my, right, just all those other factors. And so I would just suggest to think outside the box and find what else can we invest in that is not just a salary? That makes Burnsville the place that people want to come to work. And I don't know what that is because I don't think we've ever had this discussion. You know, when we built Fire Station One, that's got a phenomenal attraction to it in my mind, based on what it replaced and what we still have to replace. And if that's a representation of a lot of out there, Fire Station One is a difference maker. But it may not, that may not be the whole solution. There may be other, you know, amenities, factors, benefits, you know, you know, not not enhanced dental insurance or enhanced, you know, health. I mean, it's the other things. It's the things that are important to a person's family that can support that person being on the job.
Yeah, I'll go to Chief BJ and then I'll go to to Chief Tanya.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I would say the number one thing is culture, right? I think we we have a culture that cares for our employees and I hear it time and time again. We invest in our folks. We get them the right equipment. They don't feel like they're coming in operating with broken equipment. That just kills their ability to do their mission. We support training and developing them, both as a person as as well as a professional in their technical career. And we support them with health and wellness efforts. Station One is a perfect example of that, right? Our seriousness as a community, as the council, as staff, supporting their health and wellness and understanding the work that they do and how can we make them as whole as possible, given what they have to go through. Those things are the attractions, right? So that's the physical representation, but really it comes down to the culture and you know, we recently did a culture survey and I was just talking to one of our new firefighters about it and he just raved about like things like strengths and some of the leadership training we do and the health and wellness efforts and the ability to to work out on duty and earn some fitness time off by by being well, right? Like, our focus isn't on punitive. It's about how do we empower these folks and encourage them? And that culture and caring about them as a person, right? Like, you got family stuff to take care of. Don't worry about work. We will fill your shift and you go take care of your family. We're not going to guilt you into coming to work here. We need you to take care of your family first. And that approach from a culture standpoint is unparalleled and very important, right? We can't, we could pay him whatever, but we also need the culture component. So I think those two things paired with culture and taking pay off the table ma- makes a huge difference for recruitment retention and I hear it from our folks.
And I was going to say the same thing. I echo everything that Chief is saying and it's about the culture and it's about the people and I think that's why we retain our people. So to know us is to love us, which if we can get them here, we can keep them. So I'm hoping this helps. I think the other thing is just, you know, being doing the things that council and city manager Lindberg have addressed over the last year of wellness. And we do a lot of wellness, right? And thinking about facilities and how can we have our facility as a police department, you know, a top-notch facility for wellness for police officers. And I know those discussions happen and I'm sensitive and understand, like, everything costs money and so I I get that. But I would say just having those discussions and thinking about that and looking at how do we take care of our people, that is helping to keep a lot of people in the city, I believe. And so I would echo those same things and we have to get and think about, like you said, outside-the-box ways of how do we get people in, right? How do we get younger people in? How do we get them in and then help and train them? You know, provide them the tuition reimbursement, pay for their school, you know, help them learn the job and then hire them when it's time. So we have this you know, longer-term plan because we don't have hundreds of people applying for these jobs anymore. So we got to get creative and we're doing that and we're thinking about different ways. But again, all of this takes time, it takes money and so that's why I say it isn't just wages and but it's all those things are connected to that, once you get into wellness and the culture and and just why people put the badge on and why people do that for public safety and, you know, every day they go to work thinking, they know that they're putting their lives on the line every day. They get up, they put body armor on. I've said this many times. They put body armor on before they go out and do their job. Not everybody does that. So they have it in them to want to do the job. So it isn't just about the money either, but we want to pay them for the work that they that we are asking them to do.
You know, and you bring up a really good point about culture and Chief BJ, you said it also, it's about the whole organization. Because if you don't have IT doing the work that you all need to get the information you have and they work and just reading this is the first time that we're seeing operational function. And so thank you for that transparency, but we have to mind those boundaries. But the thing is, when I also see what what you need from Public Works, they have to make sure your automobiles are running excellent so that you can respond. And they talk about that in in the work that they're doing. And Tom and his group has working twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. All of you guys do that. And it's that wholeness in the organization. So like Councilmember Keely, I like what you're doing because the thing is, you talk about maintaining that non-binding resolution and we're staying within the budget and we're going to try and solve this problem so that we can maintain the staff that we have and continue to to show them how much we care about them, but also we need to recruit. And it's all across. It's not not just the the crisis is in public safety. But it's throughout the whole organization. But the crisis is here. So.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we're a team and we all have vastly different jobs. I don't, as an example, I don't put body armor on every day to to go serve this community. We have vastly just on Friday. We have we have vastly different jobs. And frankly, Councilmember Keely, I think your question to us is one of the most definitive parts of of what makes Burnsville great. We have a foundation, and I'll use police and fire as an example from your question. We are known to be an organization where the council supports staff. That is a that is a critical factor in in us being able to operationalize the service that you want us to deliver. Said another way, it is it is it's it's important to us and in something that's determinative, i- i- as it comes to people choosing to stay here and wanting to come work here. And then the rest, that makes our jobs easier, right? The the rest is then on us to to make sure that we're living our values, that we're developing our people, that we're creating a culture where people can learn and grow and know that frankly, they're cared for. So I think it's an important an important point to not only celebrate, but to recognize that 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 support goes in a tremendously long way in our team being able to do their jobs well for the community.
Vince, your thoughts about the recommendations before us?
I I just some follow-up questions on this. So the seventy-fifth percentile and getting up to the six and seven percent higher for tonight's conversation was specifically geared towards police and fire. Is that correct?
No, that would be be geared towards all employees within the compensation.
So we're talking about the entire organization getting up? With an emphasis on police and fire because that's where at least critical need is.
And they're actually, when when we were looking at market, they were some of the ones that were lagging in market. So we have majority positions in market, but we're seeing police and fire in particular. They're our biggest concern because they're they're lagging fairly substantially.
So one point one million is sufficient to get the entire organization up to the seventy-fifth percentile for this year or is that a projected out for several years?
Yeah, so for for twenty twenty-four, that would be what would be required to get everybody up to the seventy-fifth percentile and then we would, that it wouldn't be another one point one million next year. It's just then that's that's the level we're at and building off of that in terms of.
So when you say everybody, that's everybody that's employed minus seasonal workers?
Yeah, so it means all full-time.
But in doing this, it would take any use of fund balance off the table for the next ten years or then till twenty twenty-six?
I think as we're looking at it, you can certainly see it does limit our use at this point. I would also caution, you know, ten years is a long time, even five years is a long time. So, you know, this is what we know as of today with the factors we have built in today. That could change. It could certainly fund balance could grow faster than we than we plan. Certainly, you know, any number, any number of factors can impact that. Certainly, part of why we look out long-term is really so that we can so that we can plan and prepare so that if something unexpected happens, we do have time to to plan for that. So.
But tentatively, we'd be looking about twenty twenty-nine until we're above that forty percent minimum policy.
You are, it's very hard to see because it's it's not substantially above it. In twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight, we are we are still above that. I think we're about forty-one, forty-two, forty-one percent in those years. It it does just twenty twenty-nine, I don't remember off the top of my head what percent we were at, but it does steadily grow each year.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it because we'd really just be putting all of our chips in for this project for until twenty twenty-nine. As as far as the use of fund balance for any other type of project that might come up, pending any variables like income or investment income and things like that, right?
Yep, certainly, you know, if the if other factors increase, if revenues increase, that will that more than what we expect. And we're we're pretty conservative in our estimates as as prudent. It does already include, you know, the investments that we planned in last year's budget toward the org analysis and all of those things. So there was already a planned spend down of fund balance to get us in the, you know, we were in the mid to mid forties. So there already was a dip planned for twenty twenty-six. This just kind of patterns gets us a little bit, well, gets us right at that forty percent in twenty twenty-six.
And BJ mentioned that other or individuals are looking at other departments that aren't doing transport. So maybe have we looked at vacating our ambulance license and making it more appealing?
And I would tell you the reason they're adding paramedics.
I say that with my tongue in my cheek, but I my the root of my question is 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 we've talked about this before, BJ, is that people that seems to be something that I don't, is acting as a hindrance to us. don't, is acting as a hindrance to a certain degree, right?
It is, but I would tell you that they're adding paramedics to the engine because their ambulance service is less reliable.
Right.
So-
That's a fact.
That's a huge factor. And so they're not controlling their own destiny because they don't own their ambulance license.
Right.
Yep.
And it becomes inefficient. Forty percent of our calls, we don't even send a fire engine on or a first responder. They send a first responder on 100% of them, so you're duplicating, it'd be like us sending an engine on every call, right? So there's an inherent efficiency in how we respond. So we haven't looked at that, because I do think this is the most prudent way to provide service. Because you'd have all the costs and no revenue, right? We'd be talking about a loss of $3 million of revenue and still need all the people.
Yep.
So, I, I haven't gone down that road, just because I don't think for the, the community it's the right way to go.
No, I, I agree. And I was being somewhat facetious, but there is a point there that if we're losing people to other departments without, I think it's something, there's something there, and I don't know what it is, but-
Doesn't mean it's the best service.
No, I know. And then, you know, obviously I'm not going to step in your lane, and we've talked about this in, in other meetings, but I, I would love to see some type of revitalization of, you know, our Police Explorers program, or some type of program with the high school where we could feed off of, you know, our Burnsville school kids and, and try to get them to drink the Kool-Aid early. Because then you've got, you know, the already inherent investment in the community of people that are already here. And I know that this is things that have been done, and there's different relationships with the school district, but I would just love to see us at the high school and, and building a pathway if it's not already there to some degree. And I know that that's probably something you all have already discussed at length, but I just wanted to reiterate that, because I think that's a crucial relationship and something that I think could help with some of this, big-picture-wise.
Well, we had it, and then it was cut. It was cut because of cost.
By the city or by the district?
No, we had our own, we didn't, not with this district, we had our own program.
The Explorer Program.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, we had our own program, but it was cut.
Well, I don't remember who I was talking to, but I was in the Police Explorer program for a minute, and I think I was the only one of the seven or eight kids that didn't take a career in public safety in some way, at least in my graduating class. And so for the kids I was with, it was very effective, because everybody went into law enforcement in some capacity. And I don't know if that was the same year-over-year, if that was a one-off for that class, but I personally found it very valuable despite not getting into a career. And I still retain a lot of the knowledge that I learned when we were clearing out rooms in the old AAA building and-
Yeah. I think that's another factor that our chief will have to take a look on an operational level and all the costs that comes along with it, because you're taking officers off of their duties to teach that class and to mentor those students and to get them on a track.
And maybe that's something that an individual officer might find fulfilling as part of their job, you know, and there are inherent teachers. But, again, I know I'm tiptoeing outside of my lane and just more thinking out loud, but overall, I'm supportive of this. It just-
Okay. Okay, all right.
So Vince, did you get booted out?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna ask. No, I completed it, I just-
You can tell her later.
It was Woody and Path, I think, at the time. No, I just was, completed it and we're done, so.
Dan G.
Listening to all this, this seems to me like something we actually just need to do. I, I'm not a big fan of spending down reserves, as you know, but as I'm looking at this, we're going to get them back rather quickly, within a couple of years. And so, in this particular case, it seems like that might be the right thing, especially since you didn't come back and say, well, we need to make cuts here, here and here, to make this happen, or change what we're looking at this year so far from last year. And so, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Kara?
It's an appropriate use of fund balance, so I have no problem with this at all.
Okay. And Dan K, already, he was the first to say that this is it. So, City Manager Lindberg, just do it.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Very much appreciate your direction. Thanks for taking the time to talk about this issue. Like I said, I, I don't take it lightly. I do believe that this is the single most important investment that you could make. So thank you for your support, and we will work through the budget process to operationalize these projections. And I, I do assure you that I believe that this is a responsible and a conservative use of fund balance. It, it does make sense. And I'm confident that it will have a significant impact. So thank you very much for your support of staff, and we will, we will work through this during the budget process this year.
Well, it, you know, we're building culture and we're building excellence in our organization, and it's a place where people would want to come and work. And everybody is doing this, you know, I keep reading, I'm, I, I read what Delta is doing, and I read what all of the other companies are doing. Everybody is looking to, to make sure that they're competitive on the labor market force. So, you're doing something very thoughtful and making sure that we, you know, are doing the right thing.
Absolutely. This is, this is vision stuff. This is boldly leading.
Yeah, it is. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So, we're going to go to roundtable, and there's a scheduled special work session. Who's speaking to that?
I will.
Okay.
Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Since last Friday, when this packet went out, we have increased by nine applications. We now have 22 applications for our commission interviews, three of which are incumbents applying to, to, applying for reappointment. That still leaves us with 19 interviews. We do about five per hour. We, I have put a hold on your calendars for May 23rd, which is traditional unless somebody has a conflict for that date, that fourth Thursday, fourth Tuesday in May. I just want to check with you if you want to start at our normal 5:30 time, or if you'd like to adjust that.
I, I keep my Tuesdays open, so I do not care. I am flexible for whatever the rest of council wants to do.
I think I've got the only one that, Dan K, are you flexible to start a little early?
Depends on how early. Like, five?
Five? Well, it's a half hour. I mean, if we're, you know, every, every bit works. Vince?
I'm with Kara. I have Tuesdays committed to council, and my office closes at 4:30, so I can be available anytime after 4:30.
Okay. So, Dan K, is, we start at five then?
I'm good anytime. I can do it at eight in the morning.
Yep, because, yeah. Five o'clock is, okay. We'll start at five.
I've got it, thank you.
Okay. The next is that reports on advisory boards, okay? Vince, you have anything to report?
I have no updates today.
None for me.
Okay. Kara?
Yes, so the, although we'll, we'll get more into it, we'll have more information from Tom coming up, and also from our city manager on, on Dakota County, Dakota broadband.
Yeah, we saw the-
Yep, we got everything set, so now we can start, like, we have firm information now. So now we can start to take our steps forward. Thankfully, Tom was on top of it early, and so we're in a good position for that. So, you know, I think we're pretty good for that, so.
Yeah. And, and your weekly update addressed a lot of that also, so that was good.
Absolutely.
And also had the link too, so that was good.
Yes, yes. So, now that we, now that we have the firm information, we can go forward. So, yes.
Okay. Is there anything else? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Dan K?
I only have one new thing. It's related to STA and transportation funding that's, debates going on at the Capitol. Our microtransit bill that Chair Bernstein introduced didn't make it into the omnibus transportation bill. And there is, the funding formula being proposed does not specify funding for suburban transit providers, so we are in a difficult battle to try and ensure that we get our crumbs, our, our share of crumbs through the Met Council. And it has long been established that the Met Council does not treat the suburban transit providers fairly when it comes to funding. And we've had some earmarks in transportation bills for the suburban transit providers, but what is being provided or proposed these days in this session is rewarding Met Transit for very poor financial management and cheating the Suburban Transit Association members out of funding they deserve, and the good management of their budgets that they have long since done. So, we're, we're very disappointed. Don't have anything good to say about this session when it comes to transportation allocation. So, that's all I'll say.
So the one thing is, to report is our Savage-Burnsville collaboration. And it was a very productive meeting, very good meeting. There was a lot of just reports with regard to, there was a lot of questions that had to do with police-fire training and, and how all of that's done here in Burnsville because of what, as Chief BJ reported, you know, Savage is becoming a full-paid fire department, and also looking at what Burnsville is doing and how we're training. So, there was a conversation about that, and I'll report on that. Transit Trends was another item, and one is the shift to what's happening with regard to the microtransits. And it's working well here in Burnsville. I'm not quite sure how it's working in Savage and other cities. I don't know if you have anything to speak to that, Dan K, with regard to, you know, the service on demand?
Yeah, it, it continues to be the fastest-growing segment of MBTA's business.
Yeah, and we talked about that. But for Burnsville, I know that we're doing well. I don't know what's, you know, Savage is trying to understand, you know, is there a report that goes out to the different, to the joint powers, cities?
Yes, yes. And the Savage representative on the MBTA would have access to that information as I do. Savage is not adapting to microtransit as well as Burnsville did or Eagan. The Eagan area is, is, was the last expansion, and it grew so fast, it grew past the demand levels that Burnsville and Savage were producing. So ironically, Eagan fully embraced microtransit in a major way, and that's where a majority of the activity is happening. Just to tag on to that, while you brought it up, in our STA meeting yesterday, Southwest Transit has been partnering with Lyft-
Yeah.
-in the microtransit arena with a $10 credit if a person chooses, and it's integrated into their prime, which is what they call their microtransit, with a, up to a $10 credit if the person ends up using Lyft as part of their microtransit services within a defined area.
And that's Southwest?
That's Southwest Prime, yeah. So they're, they're actually, they were the first ones to test this-
And it's working well?
-microtransit. And as, as of, they had a budget of, oh, I think it was 1,200 trips. They have, they had money set aside, and they've used up 180-some of those trips already. It just started. And so it's been adapted by the marketplace pretty quickly in, in a very confined test, but a good proof of concept. And it's, it's going well. It's something that MBTA is looking at, because as we are building our brand-new app, we are integrating communication with other transit providers and private providers like Lyft and Kluber, so.
Okay.
We're headed in that direction, but they are, Southwest is already doing some testing on it. And Southwest has been looking for a new executive director, and apparently they found one finally.
Oh, finally.
So, we quietly were in talks of, of potential merger a year ago, and, and that, that didn't go anywhere. But I, I think personally, we should have found a way to make that work, because the leverage at the Capitol of a, of a combined Southwest and MBTA would have been substantial. MBTA alone, without Southwest-
It would be the largest.
Yes. We're the second-largest outside of Met Transit. We're the number two in the state, MBTA is. If we would have added Southwest, it would have been bold, not quite significantly as well.
Yeah. So, and then Ryan reported on a water treatment plan, and gave them an update on, on our water efforts and all of that, so you did that. And then one of the things that Savage was looking at was affordable housing. You know, how much are we doing in Burnsville and what they're doing? So, we talked about what, what we're doing. But that's what's going on with the Savage-Burnsville meeting. Greg and Hugo, and Ryan, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so, Mayor. It, it does provide a good opportunity, and perhaps Ryan can speak to this, sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Peterson, but we've had some very encouraging news from the state and from our independent testing-
Oh, yeah.
...on the initial, if you recall, the initial radon tests that we received, and talked with you about now a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Both state, state testing and our independent testing have had some encouraging results in our water supply. So I don't know, Ryan, if you want to speak to that?
That was good. It was in your weekly update, but yeah, speak to it, because then the people will hear it.
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. When we had the test back delivered to us in February, that we were at 8.8 picocuries per liter of radium, and the laubos 5.4. So we obviously did a bunch of investigation, trying to figure out what was going on, and made some operational modifications. Since then, we've been testing both the finished product and at different well sites, and we are now well below the 5.4 level, which is where we historically have been. So, there's always been radium in the drinking water, but we've always been below the state standards, and we are at that.
Way below now.
Yes.
And the nice thing that our staff has done, and that was reported in your weekly update, is that we hired an independent testing agency apart from the state's tests.
Madam Mayor, members of council, that is correct. We, we wanted to get our own as well, because it was definitely an anomaly. What that we received back in February was not our normal, so.
So that was nice, that we took control of things and said, okay, we need to understand what a third-party tester could, could also produce. And that was very well done. And then, of course, we're going to be hosting the Dakota County Mayor Managers Meeting at Fire Station One, and that is next week. And Hugo and BJ and Tanya and I will be there. So that's what's going on. And then, of course, all of the other things that happens within, like, metro cities, that starts in, in the summer. And that's all I have. Anything else from your side, City Manager?
Not from staff, Madam Mayor.
Okay. You're all done, Michelle? Okay. And with that, we stand adjourned by acclamation.